I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley, Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Zombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin our recognitions, I would like to just read a statement. As we look forward tonight to celebrating the many individuals taking on new roles as District 211 administrators, I want to acknowledge someone who is notably and sadly absent. Antoinette Minetti, who served Fremd High School as a department chair for both guidance and English, was appointed assistant principal at Palatine High School and was eager and ready, as she always was, to change lives there. In May, her life was cut tragically short. Antoinette's loss deeply affected the District 211 community and all who knew her. Antoinette was a fierce advocate for every student and set the gold standard for professionalism. Tonight, she surely would have been smiling at the opportunities that lay ahead. We are proud of all she accomplished in her life and grateful for her leadership. Our thoughts remain with her family. Please join me in a moment of silence acknowledging her. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Small for recognition of our new appointed administrators.
Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. It is my pleasure to introduce tonight our newly appointed and transferred administrators and deans. Administrators and deans, will you please stand up by your chair when I introduce your name? Remain standing, and then when we're done applauding, you can have a seat at that point. First, Michelle Bremer, 10-month assistant principal at Palatine High School. Michelle Bremer comes to District 211 from Truman Middle College Charter School in Chicago, where she served as principal since 2016. She began her teaching career in 2010 as a language arts teacher. Michelle holds a bachelor's in English from the University of Illinois and a master's degree in English education and educational leadership. Welcome to District 211, Michelle.
Kelly Florries, dean Fremd High School. Kelly has been a science teacher at Fremd since 2016. During that time, she served as an assistant girls lacrosse coach and JEMs event coordinator. Kelly holds a bachelor's in biology from the University of Illinois and a master's in biology from Northeastern Illinois University and is finishing a second master's in educational administration and leadership with a principal endorsement. Congratulations, Kelly.
Lindsay Hama, dean Hoffman Estates High School. Lindsay Hama has been in District 211 for 18 years, serving as an English and reading teacher at Hoffman Estates High School since 2005. She is a freshman-level leader and has been a varsity softball coach and assistant girls basketball coach and sponsors the United Hawks GSA Club. She holds a bachelor's degree in English from the University of Illinois and a master's in reading from St. Sabre University. Congratulations, Lindsay. Eric Hauser, dean Conant High School. Eric has been a science teacher at Conant since 2003. He has also served as boys varsity water polo coach, athletic event coordinator, advisor to the Health Occupation Students of America Club, and athletic coordinator. He's been a summer school assistant principal at Hoffman Estates at Fremd High Schools. Eric holds a bachelor's in biology from Ball State University and a master's in education and leadership and organizational change. Congratulations, Eric. Alex Legere, Buildings and Grounds manager, Hoffman Estates High School. Alex spent his career at South Bermond School District 100, serving as custodian, security coordinator, and head custodian. He also worked in maintenance. He holds a bachelor's degree in general studies from Western Illinois University and has earned his facility management professional credential and professional maintenance manager credential. Welcome to District 211, Alex. Kendra Letzel, 10-month assistant principal, Schaumburg High School. Kendra has been a Schaumburg math teacher since 2002. Since the 21-22 school year, she's served as a dean at the school. As a Schaumburg grad, Kendra holds a bachelor's of teaching mathematics from the University of Illinois, a master's in math education from DePaul University, and she's currently working towards her doctorate degree in education policy, organization, and leadership through the University of Illinois. Congratulations, Kendra. Amin Maryaskui, athletic director, Fremd High School. Amin served as a 12-month assistant principal at Fremd High School last year and previously as a 10-month assistant principal. Prior to administrative work, he was a social studies teacher at Schaumburg High School, where he also coached soccer. He holds a bachelor's degree in secondary education history from Bradley University and a master's degree in history from Northeastern University and educational leadership from Roosevelt University. Congratulations, Amin. Alex Meramontes, dean Palatine High School. Alex is starting his eighth year as a special education teacher. He previously held that role at Mundeline High School and Dundee Crown High Schools. This marks his second year at Palatine, and he is a proud Palatine graduate. He played collegiate basketball while learning his bachelor's, earning his bachelor's degree at Roosevelt University, and holds a master's in educational leadership from American College of Education. Congratulations, Alex. Zion Ethan, dean Conant High School. Zion Ethan has been an English teacher at Conant since 2015. During that time, he's been an active member of the Equity Committee at Conant and also part of District 211's Equity Team. Zion sponsors the student equity team and is a freshman boys lacrosse coach. He holds a bachelor's in English from Roosevelt University, a master's in English from Northeastern University, and a master's in educational leadership from Roosevelt University. Congratulations, Zion. Aaron Pollak, 10-month assistant principal, Palatine High School. Aaron comes to us from Thomas Junior High in District 68, where he was a dean. He began his teaching career in 2005 as a social studies teacher in Massachusetts and has been a teacher and administrator in Chicago. He holds a bachelor's in history from DePaul University, a master's degree in secondary teaching and history from Boston College, and educational leadership organizational change degree from Roosevelt University. He is currently working towards his doctorate in educational leadership. Welcome to District 211, Aaron. LaShonda Sandifer, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Administration Center. LaShonda previously was a special education teacher at Glenbard West High School. She began her teaching career in 2013 as a paraprofessional in District 215. She holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Wright State University, a master's degree in teaching from National Lewis University, and educational leadership from Wright State University. She earned a diversity inclusion certificate from Cornell University and will soon complete her Director of Special Education certificate. Welcome to District 211, LaShonda. Michael Smith, 12-month assistant principal, lead disciplinarian Fremd High School. Michael was formerly a 10-month assistant principal at Palatine High School and also served as a dean at Hinsdale South. During his career in education, he has been an English teacher and assistant department chair, as well as girls soccer coach. Michael holds a bachelor's degree in English secondary education from Bradley University and a master's in educational leadership from Concordia University. Congratulations, Michael. Ricky Sparks, Director of Facilities and Purchasing Administration Center. Ricky Sparks comes to us from McHenry Community College, where he served as assistant vice president of facilities management. He began his career in purchasing and logistics at Motorola and also held roles at District U46. He earned his bachelor's degree in industrial engineering technology from Illinois State University, a master's degree in managerial communication from Northwestern University, and an MBA from Webster State. He's working towards his Chief School Business Officer endorsement. Welcome to District 211, Ricky. Adam Strauk, dean Schaumburg High School. Adam has been a math teacher at Schaumburg since 2014. He also served as the assistant girls lacrosse coach for 80 years. He holds a bachelor's degree in mathematics from Illinois State University and a master's in secondary math education from National Lewis University. Adam is currently working on his master's in instructional leadership. Congratulations, Adam. Katie Weir, Director of Food and Nutrition Administration Center. Katie was previously assistant director of food services at Oak Park River Forest High School. She previously was a dietitian at the Block Center for Integrative Cancer Treatment and dietary supervisor at St. Alexis Medical Center. She holds a bachelor's degree in food and nutrition from Bradley University and completed her dietetic internship at Dominican University. Welcome to District 211, Katie. I look forward to the connections that all 15 of our administrators and deans will make over this next year as they engage in their new roles with our staff, our students, and our parents, as well as our District 211 community.
Thank you, and congratulations to our newly appointed transitioned administrators and our promoted administrators. Excuse me, promoted administrators. This is going to be an exciting year. I thank you for accepting the challenge. I thank you for your creativity, and I thank you for everything that you bring to the schools, the energy. I look forward to seeing you throughout the year and wish you the best for the new school year. So, I thank you very much. At this time, you will be excused, or you're welcome to stay if you would like, and we will go on with the rest of our business meeting. So again, congratulations and thank you so much. Okay, the next on our agenda is the public comments. And the board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue. So the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. He's at the end of the dais here. So there will be five minutes allotted for public comment. We have three individuals who have signed up. First would be Kathy Riesberg, followed by Mukhan Dewan, and then Jessica Henkel. Ms. Riesberg.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riesberg, and as a District 211 taxpayer and as a parent and grandparent, I want to thank you for giving me and my fellow community members a chance to speak at these monthly meetings. I also want to thank District 211 for always making sure that our students have the freedom to learn honest and accurate information about history and the freedom to learn all matters of wellness included in the health education curriculum. The freedom to learn is a cornerstone of our democracy and helps prepare all students for the future and for personal success. That is why, whatever the color of our skin, our background, or zip code, we want our children and grandchildren to have an education that imparts honesty and respect about who we are, integrity in how we treat each other, and the freedom to pursue our dreams. And while the dedicated District 211 teachers, administrators, and all of you, the school board members, work tirelessly and faithfully to deliver all students an accurate and honest education, some politicians are trying to turn us against public schools in an effort to ban books, censor lessons taught, block the adoption of new curriculum materials, so distrust in the intentions of our teachers and deny certain students' resources and write people who look like them or identify like them out of our history books and take books that tell their stories off the shelves of our libraries. Yet by joining together as parents, grandparents, and community members for the common good of all students, we can become partisans for democracy and attend these monthly board meetings and use our voices and our votes in local and national elections to remind everyone that in a democracy, we must reject angry rhetoric, falsehoods, and threats being made against school board members in communities all across America. And in the process of doing this, we, the partisans for democracy, will help make our schools places where every student belongs and thrives and has the freedom to learn. Again, my thanks for this chance to speak tonight.
Thank you. Mukhan Dewan.
Hello. My name is Mukhan Dewan, a current senior at Fremd High School, and I would like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak, as well as everyone who has supported me in advocating for myself and those who are unable to do so. Although I'm grateful to be here, the issue lies in the fact that I've had to come here just to be heard. Some of the D211 administrators present today will recognize me, as I've met with multiple of them, including Mr. Langer, our activities director, who is not currently present, meeting with Joshua Schumacher, Dr. Small, and most recently, Mr. Rosenbloom, working all the way up the district chain of command to where I am now. Although, all this regarding undeniable misconduct that is being perpetrated right now as we speak by Matthew Moore and John Tyker of the Fremd Music Department. Since January and as recently as Tuesday, when I was removed from class to speak with an assistant principal regarding the issues that I've brought up, I've always elicited the same response from everyone, which is, "We will look into it and get back to you later." But unfortunately, that response gets very old very quickly. It is appalling that a school that not only has a long history of mental health, but also advocates for the mental well-being of its students, as a result of that history, is able to ignore such undeniable proof of mistreatment of not only myself, but many of my peers, for which I went as far as to collecting and printing out personally-written accounts of their experiences to hand in. Dr. Small being one of the recipients of those hard copied accounts, as well as hearing my own personal experiences regarding those teachers during a meeting. Till date, I am unable to name any tangible change that was made or any sort of accountability held. This, also the fact, after meeting with Mr. Langer, Fremd's principal, who just as Dr. Small would subsequently do, assured that not only were the matters being looked into, but also that Matt Moore and John Tyker were to be held accountable for their actions, to which she agreed were unacceptable. What exactly were their actions? Well, had anyone taken what I told them seriously or looked at the accounts that I had handed in, between the six different levels of the district and the nine different meetings I had, they would be able to answer this question without my help. So let's start with speaking negatively behind my back to a classroom full of students, and then that same issue coming up with another student who had also written an account that was handed to multiple of the District 211 administrators present here today. Another instance of telling me that as a student who struggles with mental health, that that was not a valid excuse for not fully being present in a time where I was struggling. And then when bringing that up to the teachers who told me that their excuse was that it was a misunderstanding or unintentional, but the very next day, having the same type of outburst in class and using that same excuse when John Tyker, who is now the music department chair, was having a stressful day before, right? And talking about instances where homophobic slurs were used against other students within the music department, and multiple instances of the teachers being informed that this was occurring, and multiple instances of this happening, and yet that student was simply spoken to with no further action being taken. Or a student who was suffering from depression, being told that their attitude or energy level was not conducive to the band program, continually ignoring parents and students who had spoken out about this transphobia and homophobia that's being harbored in this department. And this is just to name hundreds, a few of hundreds upon hundreds of similar stories of hundreds of hundreds of students involved in the Fremd Music Department during the last four years and more. And despite all these instances quite literally being handed to you, I'm still having to address the board today to be heard. District 211 has categorically failed to deliver me or any of my peers any sort of resolution, accountability, and change. As high schoolers, we are constantly reminded that if we see something, say something. And throughout my time at Fremd, I've seen more than enough of the Fremd Music Department under the direction of both Matthew Moore and John Tyker, and now it is my turn to say something. I hope tonight, each of the board members, as well as--
You have one minute remaining.
I hope tonight, each of the board members, as well as anyone else I have met with, will understand the gravity of the situation as I've laid out to you. I've always stated my intent to pursue this issue beyond the current stage in every meeting I've been to. Once again, I'm stating my intent to pursue this beyond the stage that it is now with no plans to stop until I can go to my peers, their parents, my own parents, and myself, and to be able to say that I've achieved something or that there's been change implemented. I would like to thank the board again for their time and to everyone supporting me, especially my parents, who have supported me and been there every step of the way. There's always more to come, and I can be rest assured that there will be more. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Henkel.
All right, good evening. My name is Jessica Henkel. As you guys probably already know, I'm a parent of a student at Schaumburg High School. I am very concerned with the lack of attention that the administration and the board is putting on student safety. This year seems to be a continuation of last year's with the growing number of fights within our schools. A few board meetings back, the board discussed having a discussion about safety, yet nothing has happened. When will this administration and board stop sweeping issues like this under the rug and actually confront the issues and take action? Last year, we saw more fights than previous years. We had a knife pulled on a student at Fremd. We had a gun brought to Hoffman High School with the intent to do harm. And within the last week, within this first week of school, we've already seen three fights break out within our schools. I think I can speak for every parent in here when I say our children's safety should come first, and you guys should make this a priority. I'd like to also mention that we're also taking into consideration that the teachers are also at risk of not being safe. So I'm requesting that this topic of how to improve student and teacher safety be brought up as new business today. My other concern is an ongoing issue with board member ethics. Yet again, we are seeing board members use their nonpartisan District 211 elected position for political purpose. It is extremely disheartening that members of the board blatantly continue to abuse their nonpartisan elected position as a political tool. Ms. Rosenbloom used his Board of Education title and position, which is a nonpartisan elected official position, to influence the community he was elected to serve. He posted pictures of his campaign activities on his official D211 page, and he was wearing his official D211 name badge. If this was only done on his personal page and he was not wearing the badge, I would not take any issue with this because as an individual, he has the right to be partisan. However, in this instance, I do take issue because he purposely wore his name tag he purposely posted on his D211 board page. This is a clear violation of board policy, BBF, Board of Education Member Ethics. The Board of Education members should honor the responsibility to which members demand by refusing to play politics either in the traditional partisan or in any petty sense, by representing at all times the entire school community. And while Ms. Klimkowitz did respond stating that the district lawyer thinks it's okay because he, as an individual, can be partisan, I challenge the lawyer's opinion because by posting on his official D211 page and wearing his D211 badge, he is representing the school board. In turn, it makes people believe that when they see him at a political event wearing his name badge, that he is a representative of District 211, which is then acting in a partisan way and while representing the district. Mind you, this is not just a District 211 policy, this is also a state policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. At this time, we'll move on to presentations, and we have the District 211 academic goals. Dr. Small.
Each year, the leadership team of our district evaluates our success towards achieving our goals. This year represents the beginning of five years of goal tracking based on academic goals established last fall. These goals are used to continue to set a culture of high expectations, examine data for gaps in achievement to guide change, and help students prepare for all post-secondary choices. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce you to a group of 211 administrators who lead our schools, meet challenges head-on, and make the most of every situation. You will not find a more dedicated group of leaders anywhere in education, and I am proud to not only introduce them tonight, but also thank them for each thing that they do every single day in and out for our students and our staff. Welcome to Joshua Schumacher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction; Julie Novak, Principal, Conant High School; Mark Langer, Principal, Fremd High School; Mike Galther, Principal, Hoffman Estates High School; Brian Harland, Principal, Schaumburg High School; and Tony Medina, Principal, Palatine High School.
Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. This mission statement serves to guide the priorities, programs, and practices of our district staff as we seek to provide extraordinary opportunities, innovative teaching, and exceptional learning to the students and our community. The district academic goals serve as performance measures through which we can analyze the strengths of our system as well as our opportunities for growth. They also serve as an indicator of what matters most to our students, staff, and community. We believe that a culture of high expectations that is clearly communicated to our students and parents is fundamental to creating and fostering the most effective school environment. Our goals were developed in a holistic, comprehensive, and coordinated approach to ensure that every District 211 student is prepared with the skills, knowledge, and experiences for success both during and after high school. The goals mirror our state accountability measures and also parallel what we know from current educational research and experiences of our students and our school community within our schools. We know that student learning is complex and nuanced, and it is affected by a myriad of factors. We have planned for this in the construction of these goals as we know that our diverse students come from many different backgrounds and home experiences. The multiple components of each goal allow individual students to demonstrate performance in different ways while still providing overall accountability as a school and a district. The goals are structured as an overarching goal statement that describes both what we desire and what we expect from our students. Because of the diversity of our student community, each overarching goal can be achieved through multiple components. The use of multiple sources of evidence gathered at different times during the school year within and across areas of performance allows a clearer representation of what student success looks like in District 211. Tonight, we will present to you the goal performance for school year 21-22. You also received a report that included district, school, and subgroup performance data for each goal based on our estimated targets. We are typically able to use student performance data from previous years to develop appropriate and realistic targets. However, it was impossible for us to use this system that we have used in the past because our students experienced significant disruption over the past two school years. Because of these disruptions to our traditional educational system, we were forced to utilize pre-pandemic student performance data as an estimate to what their post-pandemic performance would be. As you can imagine, our estimate is mathematical and does not take into account the myriad of effects that the COVID-19 pandemic had on individual students, individual families, our communities, and our school system. Our school staff worked exceptionally hard over the course of the 21-22 school year to not only mitigate the academic and social-emotional impact that the pandemic had on our students, but to warmly welcome them, reestablish a sense of belonging, and provide additional intensive interventions while expertly navigating the unknowns that came with the return to in-person instruction. The devotion of our staff allowed us not only to reach the estimated yearly targets for four of our goals, but also to exceed our own expectations for student performance in the multiple facets of the high school experience. While the report you were provided with has multiple data points, tonight's presentation is about the humans behind the data. We know that each number in that report represents a student in our school community, and we want to tell you the stories behind those numbers. Those include the programs, the staff members that facilitate those programs, and the student experiences that you won't see in the report. Tonight, you will hear these stories from the leaders that organize and facilitate learning, connection, and belonging. Each one will explain the goal, the overall district performance, and then share information not only about what happened this school year, but what's going to happen as we move forward into next school year to achieve even higher levels of success. into next school year to achieve even higher levels of success. Starting us off tonight is Principal of Fremd High School, Mr. Mark Langer.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. The district's first academic goal, which I will be speaking to, is to ensure that all District 211 students demonstrate involvement in the school community. This goal is rooted in the data that continues to show that students who are involved in the school community have higher attendance rates, higher GPAs, and lower behavior needs. District 211 has identified four ways that a student can demonstrate their involvement in the school community: by meeting or exceeding the yearly attendance threshold, which is set at 90% for freshmen and sophomores, and 95% for juniors and seniors; by participating in at least one activity or athletic team each year; by completing five community service hours as a freshman, 10 as a sophomore, 15 as a junior, or 20 hours as a senior; or by maintaining employment or completing an internship. For the 2122 school year, 86% of all students across District 211 were able to achieve this goal by meeting at least one of these yearly metrics during the year. At Fremd High School, 90% of all Vikings met this goal of demonstrating their involvement in the school community. To build back a strong Fremd community and for students to be involved in it, we knew that we needed to make sure that students felt like they belonged. Mike Alther will talk later about a sense of belonging, but for us, it wasn't enough to just say that we wanted our students to belong. We had to show that they did, and that was an emphasis with students and staff throughout last year. You may have even seen a student or staff wearing a Fremd shirt with the saying, "I belong." When a student feels like they belong, they have a connection to the school community, and they are more likely to be involved in that school community. Each week, student support teams composed of administrators and student services staff would meet to monitor and discuss student attendance. Those that are identified as needing support are worked with in partnership with their families to ensure that students are regularly attending school and learning. But Fremd is so much more than just 7:30 to 2:45. Nearly 2,000 students last year participated in at least one of the 30 sports, over 60 clubs and activities that Fremd has to offer. With that many options, there is truly something for everyone at Fremd High School, and if by some chance there isn't, our activity director works with students to make new opportunities available. One way that our activity members and athletes were able to give back last year was with the return of Halloween Festival. Little kids from the community and their families were treated to an event in the stadium where teams and clubs provided a safe place to trick-or-treat, play games, or do activities. But it wasn't just our athletes and club members giving back. Another example of students being involved in the school community last year that I want to highlight is when students and staff from Fremd High School, with the help of an organization called Special Spaces, were able to raise almost $9,000 and gave two young Palatine boys battling cancer bedroom makeovers. Students utilized their skills that were learned in classes such as business, interior design, and building construction to help with this community service project and to put smiles on these families' faces. For employment and internships, each home building has a designated college and career counselor as well as a college and career advisor that helps students explore career opportunities and takes students on career tracks. Employment opportunities are also posted throughout the building. Students who may be interested in continuing their exploration in the field of education may sign up for internship classes as well. Students work with a teacher at either the high school or at a school in the elementary district. Last year, nearly 70 students at Fremd took advantage of this amazing program. One piece of data in particular that I would like to highlight is that even with all of our restrictions that were still around last year, Fremd saw an increase in the participation of our underrepresented students. Staff made it a point to make connections with students and connect those that were not currently involved with opportunities throughout the building to be a part of the Fremd community. There was a renewed energy, and students and sponsors were eager to get back to traditional events again as well as come up with new ones, all within the restrictions of the time. Combined activities such as the previously mentioned Halloween Fest and Homecoming Parade brought many different groups together to celebrate and give back to the community, and all students couldn't wait to be a part of this. Additionally, we established several new groups for students such as Black Leader Achievers and Latinos Unidos as affinity groups, and Unwind Club as a student interest group for self-care and community. These groups provided another opportunity for any and all students to be involved at Fremd. For this year, we know we have to level up our efforts. We need to take what worked prior to the pandemic and combine it with everything that we learned during it to continue to grow the number of students involved in the Fremd community. Student support teams will continue to monitor student attendance, and additional student services staff hired with the help of ESER funds will utilize proactive interventions to keep students in the building. In the athletic and activity world, we are looking to welcome back other traditional events again as well as start new traditions. The Activity Fair, which had not taken place the last several years, will return this year to Fremd High School. This will allow students to not just read or hear what opportunities are available, but be able to see what is available and talk to those students already involved. Staff and students will reach out directly to students and families who have not signed up for an activity or team on a monthly basis, and will increase the methods of communication about athletics and activities to promote awareness and encourage participation through coordinated sponsor and school use of platforms and strategies. We are also looking to provide additional community service opportunities through the school and improve the mechanism with how these community service hours and employment are reported. We know that students are doing community service or have jobs. We just need to do a better job in ensuring that we are recording this data through educating our students on the ways to report it. And now to talk about goal number two is Palatine High School Principal, Mr. Tony Medina.
Thank you, Mark. The second District 211 goal that we will be reviewing is academic growth. Academic growth in each of our schools can be attained by meeting one of the following metrics. One, meeting the proficiency levels of the District 211 course critical learning standards, including one course in each of the following departments: English, which also includes the EL department; math, science, social studies, as well as any other electives. Two, by meeting the yearly GPA benchmarks, which are defined by using the Harper Promise GPA metrics by year in school. Three, enrolling and passing at least one AP or dual-credit course with a C or better. And lastly, by enrolling in and passing an accelerated course with a grade of C or better. As you can see, all of our individual schools had over 80% of our students meeting the academic growth goal. At Palatine, 81% of our students met the academic growth goal, which was a 3% increase in the amount of students meeting this academic goal from the previous year. As our students returned to full-day instruction, Palatine teachers, as well as those across the district, committed to the prioritization of our individual course curriculum standards. These standards were based on the release of prioritized standards for the 2122 school year by the Illinois State Board of Education. As Mr. Shoemaker stated earlier, in part due to the adjustment of the individual curriculum as a result of COVID-19, overall, our students did not master the level of success on the critical learning standards that we've been accustomed to in previous years. I would, however, like to talk about two areas with regards to AP and dual-credit that did contribute to 81% of our students meeting this goal. To begin with, nearly all of our AP courses scored well above the state or global averages in both the mean score as well as the percentage of students receiving a passing score of three or better. Also, I'd like to highlight the achievements and efforts of Palatine High School calculus BC students and teachers. Our students in calc BC scored nearly a full point higher than that of the global average. Students at Palatine averaged an overall score of 4.67, while the global average was 3.68. 53 out of 55 students earned at least a passing score of a three in what is a very challenging exam. In AP Psychology, where 153 Palatine students took the test, and a large amount are first-time AP students, our students also scored above the national average in both the mean and the percentage of students earning a passing grade. Another area that I'd like to review is the fact that 89% of our ninth-grade students are meeting the academic growth goal. Coming into the previous school year, teachers worked tirelessly reviewing the academic progress of the previous year in order to welcome students back to the classroom and engaging them in learning once again. Teachers committed to providing students with a strong sense of community and sense of belonging, tying into social-emotional learning strategies for our newest pirates. In addition to this, ninth-grade students at Palatine receive targeted intervention and academic support based on student performance through their student support teams. All ninth-grade students receive programming during lunch hours with counselors, administrative interventions, and psychologists and social worker sessions targeting students' mental well-being. I'd also like to acknowledge one specific group of ninth-grade students. As you may know, as recently as five years ago, Palatine High School had 264 students who were English-language learners. As we begin this school year, our student population of English learners is slated to have grown to approximately 600 students. Although there are many successories to acknowledge, I'd like to focus on three of last year's ninth graders. These three students began their high school lives in our Beginning English Literacy Programming. These students have had significant interruptions in their educational lives, in their home countries, and have literacy deficiencies in their home languages. All three of these students have exited the beginner level of English, are now taking college prep-level biology, are also taking college prep-level geometry as sophomores. The three of them all met the requirements to meet the D-211 goal of academic growth, with all having GPAs over a 3.6. Our wraparound practices with counselor and social worker visits, group parent meetings, as well as targeted efforts in math, English, and Spanish to support their home language literacy have given many of our EL students the tools necessary to meet this District 211 goal. Moving forward, our instructional coaches will be providing all Palatine teachers with EL strategies to support the growing number of students in EL programs. As we move towards raising the percentage of students that are meeting this academic goal, the work has already begun for this school year. During our opening institute days, we highlighted the necessity to revisit and reignite our focus on the critical learning standards of our district. This coming school year, department chairs have been asked to target critical learning standards that have been challenging for our students. Professional learning teams will identify critical learning standards that will provide students with the most opportunity for growth. Some departments are beginning to analyze the effectiveness and relevance of some of the critical learning standards. Many departments have found that the past two school years have changed their mindset on what is truly important for kids to master in the classroom. Palatine has zero ninth-grade students in M114, a developmental math class. Many of our freshmen have been placed in college preparatory-level math; others have been placed in geometry and higher-level algebra courses. Students who have been placed in college prep algebra will now have daily access to individual math supports. Some students will be required to attend if they have fallen behind and are struggling. We are hopeful that this will result in more students being afforded the opportunity to have success in math courses by giving them access to a more rigorous curriculum with the right supports. In the end, we're hopeful to provide them with the opportunity to participate in accelerated courses. Lastly, AP teachers and our administration will be restarting our first-time AP program, whose purpose is not only to encourage kids to participate in AP courses, but also to give students the resources they need in order to receive equitable access and opportunities in these high-level courses. Our goal is to recruit and retain more students who have never had the opportunity to partake in an AP class. In doing so, this will give students more opportunities to meet this district goal. Next, I'd like to welcome Conan High School Principal Julie Novak, who will be discussing our next District 211 goal.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Tonight, I will review the goal "All District 211 Students Will Demonstrate College and Career Readiness." There are four data points that reflect student achievement for college and career readiness. The goal is tiered with the expectation that most students will meet the SAT metric. Other metrics include EL student performance on the access test, as well as students meeting college and career indicators in math and/or English. The chart before you reflects last year's data for college and career readiness. Students must meet definitive national standards or perform at a collegiate level on course assessments in order to achieve this rigorous goal. This summer, our administrative team reviewed Conan's baseline data for the newly approved district goals. We realized significant takeaways, which included celebrations, moments of deep reflection, and planning for areas of growth. At Conan High School, 87% of all seniors demonstrated college and career readiness; 72% of all seniors met the criteria for college and career readiness in math; and 78% of seniors met the criteria for college and career readiness in English. This data led us to refocus our existing SAT preparation program at Conan. We analyzed last year's sophomore students' PSAT 10 results and sub-scores in math and English, and scheduled these students, who are now juniors, to participate in an intensive SAT preparation program. The program is catered to these students' needs. While all students are invited to attend our half-period lunch SAT preparation and after-school and evening programs, we're excited to see the results of a more prescriptive program. As a Tier One or All School Intervention, our SAT experts are sending a monthly newsletter to teachers that offers suggestions for how to incorporate critical thinking and SAT-focused skills such as reading and interpreting graphs, the heart of algebra, and developing a deeper knowledge of argument as it relates to reading and writing. The metrics for the goal of college and career readiness are rigorous. While it's test scores that reflect our students' readiness, it's the opportunities provided by our districts that helps realize this goal. Dual-credit, advanced placement, and transitional classes offer students curriculum and instruction at the collegiate level. These classes require our teachers to pursue higher education degrees, including MBAs and masters in content areas such as physics, mathematics, Spanish, psychology, and many other areas. Our faculty's commitment to making these opportunities available to our students is remarkable and often means traveling to colleges and universities during the evening and weekends to earn the required degree to teach these classes. The outcomes of these courses are really special. Students enrolled in certified nursing assistant classes that realize an almost 100% certification rate across our district have pursued CNA positions in our community. Students also use the CNA certification as an initial step to pursue a nursing career or a medical degree. I am so proud of our students who are CNAs in our community, and I'm thrilled to report that we now have District 211 graduates who earn CNA certificates with us and are now medical doctors and nurses in our community. I would add that our district's commitment to the most up-to-date technology prepares our students for post-secondary opportunities in a world where innovation and coding are essential skills in many areas of engineering, computer programming, and other careers. Here are students in an introductory-level Project Lead the Way course taught by John Babcock designed, 3D-printed, and programmed grippers to complete a task. This robot is a productivity robot that's meant to work with humans and accomplish tasks in manufacturing. The coding involved could result in a machine creating everything from prosthetic arms and legs to simplifying a production line. I'd also like to recognize our community partnerships as a major contributor to our post-secondary outcomes. Each year, I tell our students that I call Harper Hawaii. I think if you live in Hawaii, you probably get used to seeing the ocean, and you may forget how special it is. Because we live in a community, we may forget the value of a nationally renowned community college. We drive by it all the time, and just like the ocean, it feels like it's always been there, but it's not to be taken for granted. Our seniors have a tradition of wearing their college T-shirts at graduation rehearsal. Last year, one of our seniors, Sal, led an effort to promote our students who were going to Harper by having them wear Hawaiian shirts to graduation rehearsal. Instead of seniors saying, "I'm just going to Harper," they said, "We're going to Hawaii." It was so much fun to see students embrace a smart and exceptional post-secondary opportunity. Another community partnership I want to highlight is the Hoffman Estates and Schaumburg Rotary. Last year, the Rotary Club honored our student Lennox with a vocational scholarship and toolkit worth $2,000. This kit will support Lennox's plan to pursue his career goal of automotive technician. Finally, our students' post-secondary experiences are not as linear as we think. Students are now actively pursuing apprenticeship programs, trade schools, internships, and military programs as a means to achieve high-level career goals. These programs are often more affordable and can result in outstanding careers with tremendous growth potential. Amaya is a student who pursued Harper's apprenticeship program with Zurich. Amaya and I are connected on LinkedIn, and it's been a pleasure to see her be promoted, most recently, to Underwriting Account Service Associate. It's important for us to be aware of these opportunities and promote them through our college and career counselors. This supports the goal of all students not only being prepared for post-secondary opportunities but realizing these outcomes in a 21st-century career market. Now, Mr. Harland will discuss on-track graduation.
Thank you, Mrs. Novak. Assuring that our students in District 211 earn a diploma within four years is a primary goal for us as educators. On-track graduation status is monitored throughout all four years of a student's high school experience. At the conclusion of last year, 88% of students in the district met the goal of being on track for graduation. At Schaumburg High School, the percentage of freshman students that were on track to graduate in four years grew 4% from 90% at the end of the 2020-2021 school year to 94% at the end of last year. A new program was launched at Schaumburg High School at the start of last year that had a major impact on our students. Last year was the first year of Saxon Lift, a program designed to transition incoming freshman students into high school. The goal of the program is to help freshman students acclimate to Schaumburg High School, understand our school culture, and teach them skills that will help them be successful young adults. The Lift program is led by a combination of staff members and junior-senior student mentors. This is a great place for freshman students to find both the trusted adult and trusted peers that they can go to and connect with along the way. All freshmen are scheduled in the lift for 20 minutes of their lunch periods at Schaumburg High School. Two days a week, students take part in mini lessons to familiarize them with high school and teach important academic and social skills they can leverage for a successful four years. These lessons are led by our student mentors, who are able to build their own leadership skills while leading groups of freshman students. Already this school year, the mentors have led activities familiarizing students with essential information about where to get support, taking them on building tours around the building, and just today, they led a note-taking session on how to take effective notes in high school. The other three days a week are set aside as a guided study hall where teachers leading lift are able to meet with students to discuss their academic progress. They continually monitor student grades and missing assignments to assure students are adjusting to the rigors of the high school experience. The staff members are then able to directly give academic supports to the students or connect them with other supports in our building. This year, we're looking to build on the success that we had with Saxon Lift last year. We're seeking to continue to leverage our staff and student leaders to build positive relationships and establish positive connections and habits for our freshman students. I want to next share a quick story that outlines the impact that Saxon Lift has had on our students at Schaumburg High School. Last year, one teacher worked with a group of freshmen and noted that there was one particular student that was having trouble with their adjustment into the high school experience. As a teacher and student worked together throughout the year, some days were honestly better than others. Then, one day after school, a student stopped by the office after they forgot a personal item. item in the classroom, and they seemed relieved when they saw the teacher was still there. He didn't realize the teacher would be there, but noticed an immediate connection when he saw them. Upon going to the classroom and finding their belongings, the student seemed incredibly relieved and thankful. He teared up and told the teacher how much he appreciated her, and the teacher reiterated the same sentiment that she'd been telling him all year long. "We're on the same team, buddy. Of course, I've got you," was a slogan that she kept repeating to him all year long. At this point, the student broke down and said they didn't realize he needed someone until he saw her. They ended up sitting down together after school, and he shared some information about what was going on in his life. After the student shared more information about the support he needed, the teacher was able to connect him with the counselor and administrator for additional support. The student went home that day with a deeper connection to Schaumburg High School and knowing he had multiple students in our building that had his back to support him. It was evident the start of the school year that this relationship extended well beyond his freshman year. The first day of school, the teacher reported that the student saw her in the hallway and ran down and immediately began telling her about the summer. And the teacher quickly reminded the student that their relationship was going to extend beyond freshman year, and that just because Lift was over, she was still there to support him and still there on his side. The student I just spoke about struggled academically, and after the school year ended, was identified as one of our students not on track to graduate in four years. You might be thinking right now, why am I hearing about a student that is not on track to graduate when we're highlighting on-track graduation? What we're excited about is that this student built a lasting connection at Schaumburg High School so we can continue to support him. We will leverage this relationship to work with the student to get him back on track. While we were happy that ninety-four percent of our freshman students are on track for graduation, we know that we still have work to do with the other six percent of freshman students that were not on track to graduate at the end of last year. The first step is to have our support teams connect directly with students that were identified as not on track for graduation early this year. We would also like to increase our communication to parents and guardians of students that are not academically on track after first semester. We're currently working through a communication plan that will inform students and parents of the exact graduation requirements that these students need to mitigate in order to be back on track. The student support team is assigned to each student, composed of an administrator, counselor, and psychologist, or social worker, will also continually monitor student academic progress throughout the year and connect our students with academic supports as needed. We are extremely excited to continue this important work and continue to support our students at Schaumburg High School. I would now like to introduce Mr. Arthur to speak about District Goal Five on student wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. The state of Illinois has strongly recognized the significance of a student's physical, mental, and social wellness as factors into academic success, as identified in the Illinois Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. District 211 has in turn identified the following measurements or indicators to determine success in supporting the whole student's growth within physical, mental, and social wellness. As you can see on the slide, they are: achieve a healthy fitness zone on FitnessGram, or demonstrate growth from pre to post-test assessment; maintain a 90 rating on the Student-Peer Relationship supplementary measure of the Illinois Five Essentials Survey; maintain a fifty percent or higher percentage of favorable responses to the Sense of Belonging measurement on the Panorama Student Survey; and finally, identify a trusted adult each year. The district's performance with these indicators was successful during the 21-22 school year, and this is the first year in this goal cycle. To bring focus on Hoffman Estates High School's performance within District Goal Five, you can see that seventy-three percent of our Hawks achieved a FitnessGram Healthy Fitness Zone score or showed growth from pre to post-assessment. Now, to give some context and definition, FitnessGram assesses the physical fitness of a student based on the scientifically established Healthy Fitness Zone standards that indicate a lower risk of chronic disease later in life. FitnessGram was adopted to support data-driven decisions about our wellness education programs, which aim to develop lifelong appreciation for fitness and support, overall health, in our students. Next, I would like to highlight the following two indicators: trusted adult and sense of belonging. And these are unique to District 211, as the definitions and meanings were, one, based in the desire for a common understanding for students, parents, and staff members of District 211, developed by students from all seven District 211 schools, and then reviewed and revised by school staff. And as a side note, that student work took place in this very boardroom. The developed definition of a trusted adult in District 211 schools is: a trusted adult is approachable, creates safe spaces, and listens to students in order to provide support and connection to resources. A trusted adult makes an effort to establish a connection with students. A trusted adult listens without judgment and acts in the student's best interest. A trusted adult connects students with resources within the school and the community. Hoffman Estates was successful with nearly one-hundred percent of students identifying at least one trusted adult. We attribute this success to the combined and collaborative efforts of our entire staff, the wellness department in particular, and the principalship in working together with students by providing a working definition and the opportunity and technology support for the purpose of identifying these important trusted adult relationships. The developed definition of sense of belonging in District 211 schools is: a sense of belonging is the feeling that you are safe, valued, and involved within your school community. We foster a sense of belonging by ensuring that all students feel seen, heard, and connected to other students and adults in the school community. We foster a sense of belonging by embracing all backgrounds, identities, and experiences within the school and classroom. We foster a sense of belonging by encouraging all students to be involved in activities, athletics, and other school events. We foster a sense of belonging by providing all students with the opportunity, access, and supports based on their individual needs. Our wellness department ran point on data collection through the administration of three social-emotional wellness student surveys this past fall, winter, and spring, in which sixty-one percent of Hoffman students reported a sense of belonging. I would now like to focus on FitnessGram for just a moment. The successes of our students have had with the FitnessGram indicator are due to three primary factors: a sound and research-based fitness platform, FitnessGram; our Hoffman Estates High School wellness staff who cares deeply about the fitness and lifelong health of all of our students; and then students who bought into the importance of healthy living. So what does a student experience with the FitnessGram platform? A student experiences includes something called a Pacer Test. The FitnessGram Pacer Test is a multi-stage aerobic capacity test that progressively gets more difficult as it continues. Basically, students run back and forth as many times as they can, each lap a beep-a-sound. The test gets progressively faster as it continues until the student reaches their max lap score. Now, the significant success at Hoffman has been realized in how the data from the pre-test is used, and how the data informs the student's next steps. Teachers review the pre-test data, goal-setting occurs, and the teacher and student develop a plan towards improvement. The data is revisited during the year and prior to the post-test, which is given in March. This is the hard data, the quantitative data. In preparation for this presentation, I gathered qualitative data from Hoffman Estates High School Wellness Department Chair Beth Rosner. Mrs. Rosner shared stories of the impact that the pre-test results had on her students. She described students as visibly concerned with their initial results. However, as students progress in meeting their goals, this is where the teacher becomes coach and motivator. You would hear, if you were in our classrooms, you would hear our staff, our teachers, encouraging students with phrases like "trust the process, we'll get you there," "be well to do well," which is an emphasis between the connection of physical fitness and academic success. As we look ahead in Goal Five, we look to grow our percent of students obtaining a healthy fitness zone score, or showing growth from pre to post-assessments. Through the incorporation of a resting heart rate component as an indicator of greater cardiovascular health, the development of new and creative approaches to physical activity, this integration and creation occurs through our wellness department's professional learning teams' early-morning work session time. And again, we will focus on cardiovascular health, muscular strength and endurance, and flexibility. Hoffman Estates High School will also continue in its work in building an environment and climate where all students feel a sense of belonging with a focus on our English-language learner population, which has seen significant growth the past several years. And finally, we believe that every student in our building must have at least one trusted adult relationship, and we will strive for one-hundred percent this year. Ninety-nine point nine percent will not do.
District Goal Six seeks to increase equity in our schools through the measurements of several different components. First, we seek to increase the percentage of diverse staff members throughout District 211. Next, we want to increase the percentage of students taking what's called non-developmental coursework, reduce the rate of disproportionate referrals and suspensions, and finally, increase the number of underrepresented students who meet District Goals One through Four. The actual performance for this goal is calculated differently than previous goals, as each component is measured separately. The graph you see projected on this slide represents the fourth component, or the percent of underrepresented students who achieved District Goals One, Two, Three, and Four. This means that they demonstrated involvement in the school community, showed academic growth during the year, met college readiness benchmarks, and maintained on-track to graduation status. The second component, referenced in your board report, details that ninety-seven point five percent of students in District 211 enrolled in non-developmental coursework. What this really means is that these students were enrolled in courses that prepare them for the rigor of college, such that colleges recognize that students can move directly into credit-bearing coursework if they choose to attend college. The third component of this goal is the goal to reduce the rate of racially disproportionate referrals and suspensions. Our pre-pandemic baseline was twenty-six point one percent for suspensions and twenty-point three percent for referrals. After a year of navigating the return to full-person instruction, we exceeded the goal for reducing suspensions with only a twelve percent rate, but ended with a forty-two percent referral rate. One story that I'd like to highlight this evening is our district-wide performance on the first component, which is increasing the diversity of our staff members. As we know, our communities are incredibly diverse, and we want our students to be able to see themselves represented in our staff. The remarkable one-year increases you see on this slide is the testament to the work of our school and district leaders, led by Mr. Teniper, Mr. Britton, and the principals in front of you. We have represented four different groups of staff members, including teachers on one line, student services members, district leaders, and our overall collective staff members. Our teams were able to increase our diversity to nineteen point four percent overall, well beyond our estimated target of fifteen point seven. Specific attention should be given to the increase in diversity in our student services department, our counselors, social workers, and school psychologists, growing from nineteen point seven percent to twenty-six point two percent in a single year. The 2021-22 school year is the first uninterrupted school year since 2018-2019. While we are able to track our data and compare it to the pre-pandemic performance, these goals provide us the ability to deeply analyze our systems, our processes, and our programs. The simplification of the data that you see in the report into met and not met in our data and reports is only the beginning of our process, and it's only the beginning of our progress, as each of these are human students that have a story. As we move forward to implement the initiatives and programs that our principals described to you this evening in this school year, we are excited about the opportunity to positively impact our students and our school community while improving our educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me open it up for questions. Any questions or comments?
I do thank you very much. Thank you all for putting all this together and sharing this information with us. It's very informative, and I look forward to hearing more as things progress and we continue with the next steps that you all have in place. Mr. Arthur, I just have a question for you from your portion. Can you please explain? I understand and believe strongly in the trusted adult situation at all of our schools. I think that's very, very important to our students. And I know in past meetings and conversations, we've talked about who is a trusted adult, and we've talked about it, it can be from the person who works on the dock to the principal and everybody in between, right? And part of that is identified by the student, and part of that is identified by the staff member themselves. What I'd like to learn is, if you could please explain any training that may be available, and I open it to anybody to tell us, what type of training is available for staff members to help them and encourage them to be a trusted adult?
I don't know that we have a specific training. I think through part of what we do in hiring people, we would try to put the best human beings in front of our kids, working with our kids and our parents and our community, and I think that's the first step. And then it's all about modeling. We are about students. We are about connecting with kids, and if there's a genuine care and desire, these trusted adult relationships, they occur naturally. It's because we see a student who looks as though maybe something's just a little bit off today. Our staff is highly encouraged to reach out, ask that question, "Is there anything that I can help you with?" You know, at Institute Day, I challenged my staff to go find the best in kids, find the good in kids, and be specific about it. And I think that type of honesty with a kid and giving them something tangible other than just saying, "Hey, good to see you today," but say, "You know what? I noticed you at this event, and you did a really nice job." That's what builds those relationships, and that's what we talk about all the time. So I guess that's training, but it's formal but informal, but it is intentional.
It is training, and that's, you know, there's the unintentional training that goes on throughout the day and throughout the year, and I think having those discussions with your staff. And I also think maybe perhaps when you're doing reviews with them, right, talking about them about how their year is going or how their year went, give them some ideas and some suggestions on how to respond when they see a student who's struggling or someone who may come up to them and say, "Hey, can you help me? I'm having an issue." And maybe if they are not able to help, maybe even help them see how they can, I don't want to say pass that student along, but ask for help themselves to address the needs of that student. So that's great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got some questions. So for Goal One, how long does a student have to be employed to meet that metric? Because we count employment. Are we talking the full year, or how long does that employment need to last?
Yes, there's two different ways you can meet that one. It's a full year of employment or two consecutive summers of employment.
Okay, so two consecutive summers and then a full year. So what if a student changes jobs in the middle of the year, but they're still continuously employed? That also counts?
Correct.
Okay. And then how long does the internship need to be? Is that a full-year commitment as well, or?
It does not. That's typically either a semester or a year.
Okay. And so for fees, I'd like to clarify, you know, if we're trying to get our students involved in the community, I'm looking at all the different sub-goals underneath the large goal, and, you know, one of them is participation in athletics or in activity, which I'm assuming means any of our student clubs, right? So some athletics are very expensive to participate in, and some club activities might travel to conferences that are also very expensive to go to. So there might be some implicit or explicit financial barriers to student or family participation in some of those activities. How does our district go about addressing those barriers?
So we would address those, well, you've hit the crux of the goal, so I want to comment on that, is that the way it's written, we understand that there could be a family barrier to participating in something, which is why the other things are just as valuable, because they're involvement in our community. But I would say for this, what we do is we try to make sure that for as much of the activities and athletics we offer, there isn't a cost or there isn't a high cost associated with them. And when there is, we try to have ways that students can either, what I'll say is, get support for, so that they can still participate in that.
Low-cost music rental, music instrument rentals, I would be as an example.
All of our buildings have, I guess we could just call it student support funds. For us, it's called Hawks Nest, where when, and coaches and staff are aware that this is available, so all they have to do is reach out to the Hawks Nest folks, staff members, and then be support kids, and that can look like shoes, a baseball glove, it can look like many different things. So each of our buildings have something like that.
And I hope that information about those funds is available at the activity fairs, right, that we're going to be hosting, so parents are able to know about those funds that are available. Excellent. So I have questions about Goal Two. So, you know, I'm looking at this, and I very much appreciate, you know, understanding the significant growth of English-language learners, particularly concentrated Palatine High School, presents like a really interesting opportunity and, you know, obviously, challenge for administration, because we want everybody to still meet our goals and succeed, right? So I'm looking at all of these. So I'm looking at all of these, and on the one hand, you know, in the presentation, most of these goals are really geared toward meeting, you know, SAT benchmarks, which are out of our control. We don't write the SAT tests, et cetera, and other big-picture college readiness standards, which to me mean typically four-year university standards of readiness that this goal really aims to address. So therefore, this goal is very rigorous, and I think that that's demonstrated kind of in the percentages of students meeting this goal. So my question is, you know, when we see those English language learners, and I'm looking at enrolling and passing in at least one advanced Palatine class or dual-credit class or accelerated coursework, are those opportunities truly available to students who are English language learners who might be academically there but experiencing the language barrier? You know, are these courses available in multiple languages? How do we?
So our Beginning English Literacy Program, which we started a few years ago and has been very successful, it allows students who have had a tough going in their home countries and, like I said, have a low level of literacy even in their home language. But as they start the program, they're given courses as a cohort in math, in English, in Spanish, in wellness. There's also an opportunity to take an elective, and a lot of these students also want to transition into getting a dual-credit course as they navigate through it. So we have courses available in applied technology, advanced manufacturing, automotives. We also have our CNA courses that these students want to participate in. Granted, not all of them are ready right away, but our Applied Technology Department has actually already worked with our ESL department in how to develop strategies to work with these EL students. So I think we've recognized as a school how much we're growing within our EL student population. It was a major point of emphasis during our Institute Days this year. I said, how many students do you think we have that are EL? And nobody could have thought six hundred. But I think providing that information to our staff and our Applied Technology Department already working with our EL department through a summer curriculum project, I think it does give those students an opportunity to receive dual credit.
Okay, and then just a follow-up question. All the wraparound services that I remember two years ago I raved about because I was really happy to hear them, happy to hear that they're continuing and they're successful, are all those wraparound services that are available during the lunch hours, et cetera, are those available in multiple languages?
They are available in Spanish, for sure. We've hired a significant amount of Spanish-speaking staff. We have an actual EL social worker whose main priority is strictly to work with our EL students because of the significant growth. In terms of other languages, I can't think of any other languages off the top of my head, but knowing that over a thousand of our students speak Spanish at home, we think that's probably a priority for us.
Okay, great. Forgive me, I have just a couple more questions. So I'm going to ask some questions about Goal Three. So the intensive SAT program that was mentioned in the preparation, in the presentation, excuse me, is that free for students?
Yes, and it is a high-quality program. So I think sometimes, you know, we really encourage students to participate in that program. I know that there can be high cost connected to private programs and those sorts of things, and it's a great program.
And forgive me, is that offered during the day? I can't remember what.
It is. So it's during the first half of the lunch period for students who are targeted for that program. And in fact, just this week, we met with our junior students and talked to them about it in our first Conet Community Meeting of the year. We explained to them that everybody is able to access the program. There's some goal setting for any student who joins the program. But what we found traditionally was that students who were accessing our SAT programs were students who were likely already going to perform very well on the SAT, and that's wonderful. We want them to engage in that as well, but making sure that students who may not naturally feel that that's a place of comfort welcoming them into that program. And then certainly, a letter goes home to parents, and they do have the opportunity to opt out as well.
Okay, and then is that program available at all of our schools, or is that just available, you know, at some?
Every school has their own little take on it.
Each school has a different variation of SAT during the school year that can look a little bit different. So we have like a drop-in service at Schaumburg that's available, and we'll be looking at students based upon practice SAT given later this year and pulling them down for targeted support.
Right, because we've had a disparity in SAT prep before between our buildings. You know, I think this board, the last time we discussed it as a board, said that we didn't want to see that happen again, so I just want to make sure that that's available. And then, so if you could tell me for, again, for Goal Three when I'm looking at it, how would, you know, a student who has, I mean, this was alluded to in the presentation, I guess I'm looking for more clarification. How would a student who has definitely decided they don't want to pursue a four-year degree at Iowa State University in whatever field? They're interested in a trade school, they're interested in, you know, a military program. How would a student that is firmly decided on that kind of a more, less traditional academic higher education track, you know, meet this goal?
Right. I think that's really the art of the goal and the way it was written. It is tiered, knowing that, you know, many of our students are looking to hit that SAT benchmark no matter what. That's important for a lot of our students. But knowing that they can achieve that checkmark to show college and career readiness by being enrolled in certain English, math, and other classes where the teacher through their training can get them to, can get them to the point where they can pass what would be the admissions class program and beyond the remedial component that we know students can live in forever in a junior college or in a community college or other settings. So that's really the goal, because some of the other programs, certainly military and other programs, are looking for that for a standard for students coming in as well.
Okay, excellent. And then my last question is about Goal Five here, so let me just go back. So I'm looking at the wellness, so the wellness goal. And, you know, previous to this one, we have all these different metrics. You meet one of these criteria, you've met the overall goal. To meet this wellness goal, does a student have to satisfy all of these requirements as laid out?
I really want to answer this one because I'm not happy with our data in this space. So let me answer this one, please. Sorry, guys. So it's a great question. So it's tiered so that the first indicator is the fitness gram. So it's fitness gram plus sense of belonging or fitness gram plus trusted adult. So certainly at Conet, we hit the trusted adult indicator similar to what Mike was describing in that ninety-nine percent range. What we are retargeting our focus on is the fitness gram. Our wellness teachers chose to, with the, coming back from the pandemic, we did not focus on that the way we should have, and it's important. But we really moved to some more gameplay where generally our, the PE part of our wellness classes is fitness-based. But just having students together and spending time together and those sorts of things kind of took over, and we lost a little sight of that. So we are back on the fitness gram so that we can check both of the boxes and meet that. But I think we're all looking at, you know, how, what are the areas where we want to hit? Also with Panorama being a newer assessment, making sure that we're preparing students for really what that means to take that and making sure they understand, they agreed upon definitions, so it's a little more clear to them.
Right, because that was something that students raised in the wellness groups of like, well, you kind of have to make it clear that this actually means something, and it's not just a throwaway survey that goes nowhere and does nothing. So it's good to hear. And then, excuse me for all the questions, I just have one more follow-up about fitness gram. So obviously, the pre and the post-test are the big cruxes of that program. It sounds to me like it is a traditionally implemented test, so you have a PE class that does that together. I'm just wondering if wellness teachers provide alternative testing times for students who might not be comfortable in a really large testing environment? Alternative testing times with smaller groups, less of an audience, if that might make a difference? I'm just wondering if that's been raised at all, since those pre and post-tests are such an important part of meeting the goal? Or if that's something that's been thought about?
Each department has identified what I'll call a traditional testing window, right, where they're going to do them in their course. They also have a makeup window, and so there's a potential. And that's one of the things that every principal could talk to their chairs about is using that makeup window for a situation like that, because we certainly understand that's, you know, that's a real thing.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. The wellness survey panorama, I guess specifically, who has access to the individual results of each student?
Define what you mean by individual results.
Parents, teachers, administrators?
No, define what you mean by individual results.
By a student, on a student-by-student basis. Can a parent see what the student, what their child did on the Panorama Survey?
The Panorama Survey does not give individual results to individual questions.
So it's rolled up, and the administrators and teachers don't have access to the individual students' answers?
Correct. They have access to a score of a category. So not individual student answers, a category, which puts together multiple questions to a category number. And the people that have access to it in our buildings are the administrators and the student services personnel.
A roll-up and not individual answers?
Correct.
Well, our form says that teachers and administrators have access to it.
Which form?
There's a form that we have. The superintendent sent a Panorama questionnaire, and the top says, the top says teachers and administrators have access to the individual students' answers.
I'll take a look at that form.
What was asked for was the actual questions. One of the board members wanted to know the actual questions of the survey that was presented.
Right, and at the top of the form, it says, teachers and administrators have access to individual students' answers.
They have, just as Mr. Schumacher described, they have access to the compiled score for each of the subcategories.
Well, then the form probably needs to be corrected.
Well, let's allow administration to take a look at that and get back to us.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's go get some clarification. Any other questions?
If I could, thank you everyone for the presentation. I think I have a question on how does, when we move our students up into the math courses and we identify those supports at Palatine, what does that look like? Because I imagine you'd mentioned you eliminated M314, correct?
M114.
M114, okay. So the students that normally be in there, having that dedicated teacher, are now in a different class with a different, you know, obviously, we're pushing them up. Do we have the resources to provide the supports? That's kind of my concern. I mean, my children have tried to utilize tutoring time, go to the media center, and there is a mob of people. So how does that support look in action?
So all of our students who are in M117, so the college prep-level algebra, they all have a study hall during sixth, seventh, and eighth hours. During that time, we have staff available, full-time staff, teachers, who we utilize, luckily, we're a Title I school, we have the funding to hire these extra teachers. So they are available, and it's not just one-to-one tutoring, but it's actually extra lessons that supplement what they're learning during the actual class period. So they have the availability. It's not a tutoring center that they have to go to. It's actually a teacher who's available for those specific students.
So it's more like a class setting then?
Yes.
So they're getting like a supplemental class? Okay, all right. And then the other question I had was with regard to activities. I know a lot of students will sign up for activities and maybe never show up. Are those captured in the data because we're just pulling that out of Infinite Campus sign-ups? Or are you guys using attendance sheets? Because I can't really visualize how you're tracking the participation in the activities to meet that requirement.
So coaches are asked to review their rosters on a regular basis and remove students that are not showing up. They also track attendance as well, using a couple of different methods, whether it be Infinite Campus or another tracking method of their own. So they keep track of their own attendance and keep accurate rosters of their teams.
Okay, that's for coaches and for activity?
Attendance for activities is done too, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question about critical learning standards. Can you explain that a little bit, and how do the teachers evaluate where our students are at throughout the school year or throughout the semester?
Every, did you want to take that?
Go ahead.
Every course in our district has critical learning standards that were identified by the actual teachers, some more recently, some up to ten, twelve years ago. And each year, at the end of the year or at the end of the semester, if it's a semester-based course, they do give a district benchmark assessments, which has learning targets or critical learning standards, a variety of questions that assess whether or not a student has mastered those critical learning standards. So every single course in our district does have critical learning standards attached to it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do, I just have two. The first one, the fitness gram score, is that across all five schools or is that exclusive to all five? The fitness gram?
We all get the assessment.
Okay, and with the program and the focus on overall health, is there emphasis on diet at all? And if so, how in depth?
Well, that's all, that's part of the curriculum. So students will look, right now, the app escapes me, but they build diets to help support what those goals are to achieve, right, healthy, a healthy fitness level. I would tell you also that the diversity of the food choices have definitely come into the mix, right? And we make sure that in that app, which I'll have to get you the name of that, incorporates that as well. And one of the reasons why we work with it.
I want to just interject because there are times when people take away the words that we use out of context. It's, diet has a specific connotation to it, right? And so the actual critical learning standard is nutrition. So that the focus is on the nutrition of the foods we are eating, not on that other word that Mr. Alther said, okay? For clarification to everyone.
All right, and the second part, we did get to a place where we realized the student involvement increases everything positively anyway. Are we, for our school that's not doing our back run, are we working to get more aggressive at getting students to be more involved with events, maybe incentivizing something? I'm just curious.
I think we all have different things that we're doing to increase involvement, especially this year. I think, you know, come off the pandemic, that number was not as high as we want it to be. We want more students involved. So, you know, meeting with students that are not signed up in our activity athletic directors have a plan to pull down students and talk to them about what opportunities exist. And also, we want to have the conversation about what barriers exist, you know, that we need to address that maybe we can help with, or how we can support them in other ways. So those conversations will be happening with, you know, Schaumburg and other buildings as well. And then they mentioned the activity fairs and things like that already, but we're definitely reaching out to students proactively as opposed to just waiting for them to come sign up to get involved.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I actually just thought of one off the top of my head.
Okay.
So let's say, I mean, I'll use kind of like my own experience as an example. So let's say you have a senior student who their entire senior year serves as a caregiver to their grandmother or whatever else. And that is essentially a second job, but it's not an official second job. So, you know, when we're talking about like how we track students who are employed and how we get that information, I'm just wondering, that's why I was asking these questions. I want to know exactly what we mean by employment, how narrow or expansive a definition that is to capture. You know, we're talking about capturing all of our students and everything they do. So I'm just wondering, I mean, I can't see how our metric would allow that to be counted as a job. Like, let's say somebody who regularly, you know, babysits after-school younger siblings, that is a job, and they do pay taxes, would that, would something like that count? Or are we talking about like you have to work at McDonald's and have a, you know?
So the process for having that as like a met, right? And getting to that box would be, the student utilizes one of our systems, and one of them that we have now is called the Student Readiness Plan, which has been presented to the board before. And the student would put in their information, so their name of employer, when they started, and it's not like this is the action, you know?
Right.
We understand that that's not realistic for everyone, but the date, the month you started, the month that it is or the month that it stopped, and then the counselor works to verify that. And so sometimes a counselor may have a conversation that says, hey, you didn't put McDonald's, you put grandma. Let's talk about that, right? And then that's a valuable conversation to have about the job, but also about the student's experience. So then the counselor has an insight if they don't already know.
Excellent, thank you.
You know, I'm going to add on to that one because, you know, given that example, if the student is having to take care of grandma, the student is missing out on a number of things at the school. So that's an opportunity also for, you know, maybe the counselors to start working with the parents and see what other supportive services might be available for that family. So I think that's part of that whole wraparound service then. I can see that.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I thank you very much. Look forward- All right, I thank you very much. Look forward to a very exciting school year here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then that'll take us to the tentative budget presentation. We're going to transition here, so it'll take about thirty seconds here as we switch groups.
Tonight, Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel and Controller and Treasurer Barb Peterson will present the tentative budget for the 2022-2023 school year, wherein month six of a seven-month budgeting process that began in March. My sincere thanks to both of these ladies and their entire accounting departments. Their attention to detail is greatly appreciated and certainly does make a difference for this district in terms of our financial position. The detailed tentative budget that was delivered to board members on August fifth is available on the agenda tonight electronically, along with the budget summary. The District 211 Budget Book explains our budget in tremendous detail, and I want to note it is detail that is well beyond the requirements of the ISBE in terms of budget presentations.
Lauren, Barb?
Thank you, and thank you for your attention for a second presentation this evening. Over the past several months, we have presented the board with several pieces of information on the development of our tentative budget. Since we've provided information in the past on tentative budget for several of our various funds, tonight's presentation is going to focus on the remainder of those funds and then we'll finish with a presentation of our tentative budget as a whole. So as Dr. Small just shared, the Bound Budget Book that you have has numerous line item detail for each category of revenue and expenditures within our budget. Each line of that tentative budget has a connection to the district's mission statement. The budget allocates funding for the staff, the facilities, and the services that are necessary to support our students each day and to provide them with the connections and opportunities, both in and out of the classroom. Through our budget meetings and development process, the connection back to the district's mission statement and strategic priorities remains a constant in our planning.
The Education Fund is the largest of our accounting funds and represents approximately eighty percent of our revenues and expenditures. All teachers, administrators, building-level support services, technology services, athletics and activities, building trades and food services are paid for out of this fund. The revenue for fiscal year 2023 for the Educational Fund is budgeted to be approximately $226 million, a 1.8% increase over the prior year. Local property taxes are the largest source of revenue and will increase due to the allocation of the district-wide property taxes to this fund. We're expecting the distribution of corporate personal property taxes to decrease from this past year where there was unprecedentedly high distributions. State aid is projected to decrease approximately $1 million from last year, mainly in the areas of special education and career partnership grants. Fees and other includes the proceeds from the recently sold building construction home, offset by a decrease in TIF revenue. The food service program will revert back to paid meals this year. As you may recall, lunch and breakfast were free for all students during the pandemic and were funded by the federal government. And finally, we expect to apply for full reimbursement of our S R two funding this year in the amount of $4.1 million. Our people are our greatest asset and also our greatest expense. Salaries are projected to increase 5.5% this year in the Educational Fund, following collective bargaining agreements and board-approved increases for other groups necessary to stay competitive in today's marketplace. Also budgeted are additional salaries for new S R paid positions, fifteen new positions for social services, three ESL teachers, and fifteen teacher assistants. These additional costs will be offset by additional S R revenues this year. These positions are two years in duration and will not be permanent positions. Purchased services will increase due to software replacements and upgrades to the cloud, much of which has already been board-approved. In addition, special education is budgeting for some one-to-one nurses, which will be outsourced to an agency. Tuition expense is projected to increase 2.9% due to special education placements this year. This is actually down from the projection shared earlier this summer at the time the N S S E O budget was approved. iPad replacements will remain on their normal replacement cycle and are part of the non-capitalized equipment line. And lastly, the line labeled "other" includes the purchase of a new lot for the Northside Building Construction Program this year. Technology is one of the largest departments in the Educational Fund and consists of staff both here and at the schools. It accounts for the technology infrastructure such as servers and software, as well as iPads, laptop and desktop machines, and student software. Salaries and benefits are projected to increase at a rate of about 4% net of turnover, with the plan to keep us competitive in this marketplace. Purchased services in this area consist mainly of software maintenance agreements. Last month, the board approved the upgrade and migration of the Lawson Accounting Software to the cloud at a cost of over $300,000, which is reflected in this budget. In addition, our insurance carriers are requiring a couple of new security software enhancements for next year, which are also budgeted. The non-capitalized equipment line consists of software, desktop printer, and iPad replacements, which are on a three-to-six-year replacement lifecycle.
The Operations and Maintenance Fund is our second-largest accounting fund and includes all revenue and expenses that are allocated toward the operation, repair, and maintenance of our facilities, including those funds that are used for capital and life safety improvements. The following slides will detail the budget plan for the Operations and Maintenance Fund for the current fiscal year. Overall, the Operations and Maintenance Fund, the estimated revenue is budgeted at an increase, or excuse me, at an 18% decrease over the prior year. There are two primary areas of variance from the prior year. The first is a decrease in property taxes of $3 million. While there were two levy abatements that were approved this year, one abatement was a reduction of the Operation and Maintenance Fund levy by $3 million, which directly impacts the budget for this fund. The abatement lowered the tax levy amount requested from our taxpayers and we will utilize a portion of our reserves to offset the reduction. Second, the category of corporate personal property replacement taxes, or CPPRT, revenue is $3 million less than last year. This is in part due to a reallocation of CPPRT dollars to other funds, but overall, we are budgeting a decrease in CPPRT funds of $2.7 million in total, which followed last year's record-high receipts. Our investment earnings are expected to continue to increase throughout the year as our rates increase. The category of rental facilities, the revenue here accounts for both building rental income as well as cell tower lease income. Rental income will decrease due to an extra cell tower lease payment that was received in fiscal year twenty-two, which was received as a delayed payment at that point. And finally, in the category of fees and other income, this area will decrease as we had higher TIF surplus payments last year, which are not expected again for the current year. Overall, revenue for the Operations and Maintenance Fund is $7 million less than last year. Operations and Maintenance Fund salaries and benefits are budgeted to increase per contractual rates, but budget totals also account for hiring several positions that remained vacant last school year. Purchased services in this fund account for service contracts, repair and maintenance costs, and rental costs for our buildings. This area of expense is budgeted to increase over the prior year due mainly to repair and maintenance costs. Insurance is budgeted to increase primarily as the result of workers' compensation, which was very low last year compared to totals from prior years. The costs are anticipated to increase to amounts that are close to historical averages in this category. Our utilities are budgeted to decrease just slightly due to overall utilization and adjusted control settings. Capital outlay, we have three categories here. Capital outlays for our operations and maintenance projects will remain fairly consistent compared to that of the prior year, but will account for numerous facility upkeep priorities, including ongoing efforts to improve safety and security within our buildings. Capital outlay for capital projects are expected to increase over the prior year, with many expenses carried forward from the prior-year budget. These expenses carried forward primarily as a result of timing and just supply chain delays and the time in which those bills were, expenses were incurred. The last category of capital outlay is established for life safety projects, which will decrease compared to the prior year. This 2023 will be the final summer that we will complete projects that were identified on the 2019 life safety survey. Overall, in our Operations and Maintenance Fund, the expenditures increased by $4.6 million or 14% over the prior year, again primarily due to the planned capital spending. So on the slide that we just reviewed, you saw a breakdown of costs that were allocated toward three categories of capital outlay. This slide provides additional details on the projects that are accounted for in each of these three categories. In the three categories, budgeted expenses include projects that were completed this summer 2022, and they will also include costs that were, that are expected to be incurred for projects scheduled for summer 2023. In the first category, that is our operations and maintenance, kind of our routine capital outlay category, which includes items of general upkeep and improvement in our buildings, including safety and security, paving, roofs, interior finishes such as flooring, sound system replacements, and we have planned improvements to our central IT server room located here at the Administration Center. The second category includes major capital projects. These projects include recently completed restroom and cafeteria improvements done this summer. We have a locker room renovation planned at Conant High School for next summer and a culinary arts lab renovation that's planned at Fromm High School next summer. The budget also accounts for costs that are associated with P A system improvements and applied technology cooling. The life safety budget includes two phases of demountable wall replacement, ongoing life safety roof replacement, and masonry wall improvements, including tuck pointing and controlled joint replacement. As for all of the projects that have not yet been completed, these items, or these projects will continue to be bid and presented to the board for consideration at a future meeting. So you've now received information on each individual accounting fund and the remainder of our presentation tonight will highlight information for the tentative budget as a whole. The budget serves as a roadmap for the district, which includes funding allocated towards expenses that are aligned with the established strategic plan and academical priorities that have been set by the board. Each year, there are parameters which establish the framework for our budget. Some of these parameters are established in code, including maintaining a balanced budget and completing life safety projects on a defined schedule. Other parameters are established through current contracts and board priorities, including items such as our salary and benefit costs and facility improvements. Parameters may also be set by program regulations, including grant restrictions, which include funding for S R and our other grants. Overall, our team works to identify as many variables as possible when developing each line item of the budget to ensure that it adheres to the overall parameters and priorities of the board. The 2022-2023 tentative budget accounts for a planned deficit of $3.2 million in total across all funds. The deficit position of our budget plan is intentional as the board has established priorities which draw upon the utilization of our reserves. These funds have a positive budget, three funds have a positive budget balance or a surplus, and two individual funds have the deficit, which is allowed under our budget guidelines since the district has sufficient reserves to offset the deficit spending. As reiterated earlier this evening, the board approved a levy abatement of $3 million from the Operations and Maintenance Fund and also has a plan to use reserves to pay for capital projects in the Operations and Maintenance Fund, which results in expenditures exceeding revenue for the year. Barb will now discuss the tentative budget for all funds in greater detail.
There is a lot of detail in this presentation tonight and there's even more detail in your budget books. But please keep in perspective that over eighty percent of our revenues are from local property taxes and eighty percent of our expenditures are from our salaries and benefits. The property tax budget was set when you approved the 2021 tax levy and the majority of the salaries and benefits are contractual. For the overall budget, we are projecting a decrease in property taxes, and this is caused by two factors. First, the abatement of $3 million of the 2021 levy approved last March will reduce the tax bills which will be issued this fall. And second, we are projecting an increase in property tax refunds. What is not included in the tax revenue line is any money related to the recaptured levy. And as you recall, you have baited that $2.9 million in full last March. As the interest rates creep up, our interest earnings will as well. As discussed earlier, state funding will decrease about $1 million due to some changes in special education reimbursements and food service sales will shift from government-funded to student-paid. Corporate personal property taxes will decrease as discussed earlier. After a record-high year, we are budgeting to receive 75% of the amount that we received last year. Fees and other does include the sale of the building construction home earlier this month, offset by some lower TIF revenue. And the federal aid includes the $4 million expected for S R two reimbursement, offset by lower federal meal reimbursements. In total, we are budgeting a decrease in revenue of $5 million or 1.7%. On the expenditure side, wages are expected to increase 5.5% due to collective bargaining agreements, competitive wage adjustments, and additional staffing. Increases in healthcare costs will mostly be offset due to lower I M R F employer rates, resulting in only a 1.5% increase in benefits. Purchased services include software upgrades and cloud migration as discussed. Capital outlay will increase due to a combination of the types of projects budgeted, additional money for security upgrades, which is included, and some carryover of project costs from this summer. Tuition expense reflects the cost of educating students placed outside of our buildings due to special needs and circumstances. Both the cost per student and the number of students placed outside is expected to increase next year. The miscellaneous line includes the purchase of one lot to be used for the Northside Building Construction Program. And overall, we're budgeting a 6% increase in expenditures over last year. To recap what is included in the expenditure budget for S R funding, we have already hired fifteen new employees for a two-year term, consisting of a combination of psychologists, social workers, and counselors. Three schools will have an additional ESL teacher next year and each school will have or already have or will hire three additional teaching assistants. Our COVID-related health services staff and P P E will decrease from levels during the pandemic. Overall, we expect to spend approximately $2.3 million that will be reimbursed with S R monies. Tonight, you'll vote to put the tentative budget on display for thirty days and to file a notice of such in a local newspaper. At the September board meeting, the board will adopt the budget as it must be filed with the state by September thirtieth. Thank you for your attention and we're happy to answer any questions tonight. Thank you for your attention, and we're happy to answer any questions tonight.
Just a couple of quick ones. With regard to the 90% increase in the capital outlay, noted in there was the applied tech air conditioning. So of the amount that that's budgeted in there, how much do we think that's going to contribute, or what's the estimated cost for that?
I don't recall the exact cost for that specific project offhand, but I do, I can tell you that we are looking at cooling for Conant and Palatine, which already have a portion of cooling installed, so they are. The cost for those two particular schools is not as high as it is in some of our other buildings. I can certainly get you that information, I just don't remember the specific detail.
And that amount will come before the board, the estimate for approval prior to, or are you just planning on bidding that for the summer?
Well, we would need to bid it to have the cost to come to the board for approval, but certainly with the board's authority to grant us the planning and bidding of those projects, we would bring them. We did have to include that information or those costs in the budget.
Sure.
But certainly, all of the projects that are included in that fund will be presented to the board for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
That includes the PA systems as well.
And then with the additional hires under the Essor grants, does the reimbursement include benefits or just salary?
It does not include any healthcare benefits, but it does include payroll tax benefits, including TRS.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
A couple.
Mr. Kramer?
Slide eight, please. You went over, the question I have, you went over it in a couple of different places. The, can you go through why we got such a hard, an increase in the PPR tax, corporate PPR tax?
That is the question of the year. This is a category that the district does not set. The Department of, Illinois Department of Revenue releases a budget every year. We don't get that budget in time for our budget. It's usually released later. Even compared to their budget, we received millions of dollars more than were expected. There are ideas that the, so it's a replacement tax that's paid based upon their revenue. So there is a belief that some of the stimulus funds that were fed into the economy drove some of that increase. There are some other ideas that are out there as well, but to be honest, there's a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of discussion on what is the appropriate number for this year, but I think everything that we're hearing is that we still expect to see an increase over prior years, but less than we did last year. So 75% is the estimate that we've included.
With that in mind, I understand that, how did you come up with 1.5 million? Is that crystal balling it, Ouija board? I mean, because it's so unpredictable.
So in total, we have.
And that's the later slide.
It was over 6 million.
I think it's about six, let's see here, about.
6,375,000 budgeted.
So this slide, the slide on slide eight, that was for one individual fund. The allocation, so last year, we had more of those dollars go into the operations and maintenance fund. This year, we have more going into other funds, so it's just the spread, but in total, we are down about $2.7 million.
But how did you come up with 1.5? I mean, because again, it's unpredictable. It could, it could be one, it could be, it could be six.
Well, the total, again, the 6.375 is 75% of last year's total. The way that it's spread, the 1.5 is just a portion of that, which is allocated to the operations and maintenance fund. It is an estimate. It is an estimate. There are many financial consultants that are, that we work with. There are, you know, the other people in our positions in other districts have all consulted, and people feel that 75% is an accurate estimate to include.
Okay, that's the best you can do.
Yeah, it's, I wish I had a better answer, but that's.
The question on the, the capital outlay, I guess it's here, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, the $10 million as opposed to five plus last year, how much of that is carryover of the $10 million? How much is the board already approved and how much has to be approved? And I think, isn't, isn't that pretty high? Hasn't always been around $5 million for the last couple of years?
No. Last year, what did we budget last year? I think it was nine. Does that sound right? Let's see, eight.
If you say it's, I don't, you don't need to look it up. You say it was around nine last year?
Eight and a half was last year.
Okay, so it's a.
So we do have costs that are allocated for additional safety and security this year. We also have costs that are allocated for the PA systems and the applied technology cooling, but we do have, I think we calculated roughly a million dollars in carryover expenses that were anticipated last year. And one example is we had done a pre-purchase on all of the equipment for our cafeteria renovation. We had expected, we had, when we bid it, we wanted it to be received prior to the start of construction. Due to manufacturing and supply chain delays, we did not get some of those pieces until into this fiscal year, so we had about a million dollars in carryover, or about, well, yeah, almost a million dollars in carryover just on that particular item.
Refresh my memory, we do a piece mail, have all of the capital projects that are, that we're talking about here, have they been approved by the board already?
No.
No.
The ones that were completed this summer have obviously been approved. You've approved some planning for some others to get us going for next year.
So there's more stuff, some of it may not happen.
It's possible.
Okay.
But approximately 75% of that $10 million in capital projects line has been approved.
Then slide 13, I'm, I'm a little confused. The, the, I can't balance what I'm looking at here with, with what I've seen in the previous slides. The capital projects, you say beginning fund balance zero and projected end fund balance zero. I don't understand the zero.
So we, a few years ago, we stopped utilizing our capital projects accounting fund. All of our capital projects, those, those costs are allocated in our operations and maintenance fund.
Okay, thank you.
So everything that we just discussed, those projects are included there.
And then, again, it's looking in the future, okay, but it does make a difference, even, I think, in this budget that we're gonna vote on yea or nay. How much of the, of the December levy is going, is going to roll in and pay for, pay for this? I mean, the levy's passed in December, it's retroactive, 5%, then the bills are gonna be late, that's another, that's another topic, but how much of that tax money is going to be part of the revenue stream? Because, because we get it in March theoretically, and then, I guess, in August, at 55%? That's what I pay.
Well, it depends on, if you, if you want to talk about the revenue stream itself, then we're talking cash basis, and we're gonna receive 45% of that levy within the next six months. And then we'll receive 55% of the 22 levy in the spring.
That's interesting. I have to pay 55% of my last, my last tax bill. We're only getting 45%?
Well, I guess if they were equal bills or equal tax levies, it would be it, but you're billed 55% of your last year's bill, right?
Yes.
And then in the, in the fall, you get the remainder.
Right.
Right. So if the levies were consistent, it would be 45%. Our levy went up a little over 1%, so it'll be a little bit more.
So theoretically, I mean, that's another discussion, but have you rolled in a 5% levy? 2% levy? What, it's gotta be in here someplace.
Whatever, no, whatever we, whatever levy you set in December doesn't matter for the revenue that we'll receive in the spring, because Cook County doesn't have time to process that, that levy that we file, so they're just going to levy 55% of the 21 levy.
Okay, so.
So whether we pass a 5% levy, a 4% levy, a 3% levy, we're gonna get the same amount of tax revenue in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
They'll adjust for it next fall.
Yeah, I, my, my experience has been that, again, it's, it's, it's a lot of estimating. We tend to be, we tend to overestimate revenue, I'm sorry, we tend to underestimate revenue and overestimate expenses. I think I say this here.
I feel like the revenue that we underestimate is out of our control, and last year, on the expenditure side, I think we were pretty close, except on capital.
Yeah, which is a big expense.
Yes, it is.
All right, any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenblum?
So I'll refer like my colleague does, slide 10. There's the, the capital projects, but Ms. Humble, you already answered the question regarding some of the delay in materials being received, because my question was gonna be, I wasn't sure why, on here, it says restroom and cafeteria renovations, summer 2022, why that was being included in the 22-23 budget, but you explained that, you know, some of the materials came late, so we have to include that.
Yeah, and really, we pay for the project, or we pay for the work as it's completed, so we do pay for a portion, you know, with that project taking place from May to August, we're paying for a portion of it through June 30th, but the, the vast majority of the costs are going to come in after that point. So we're going to have carryover costs related to the construction, but then we also had delays in materials we thought we would receive in the year, and then that will hold true for next year. If the projects are approved, we will pay for a portion of them, a smaller portion in this fiscal year, and the remainder of those costs would be budgeted next year.
So I, I kinda checked that off when you were answering Mr. Kramer's question. Slide 13, again, to Mr. Kramer's question about having zero for capital projects, and we're no longer using that fund. Just out of curiosity, is it a legal thing or an accounting thing that we still even have that fund in our reports? That it's showing even on the screen if we don't use it anymore?
We can certainly take it off of these reports.
I'm just making it a little cleaner, I think, perhaps, right? That was my thought. On, in the budget that we received, in the budget book that we received, and maybe you spoke about this, there's a sentence that says tuition costs are expected to increase due to special education, educational facility placements, and their corresponding costs. Could you maybe tell us a little bit more detail about what's driving that and what's expected from that?
Sure. A large portion of that is the monies that we pay to NSEO for our students placed at Kirk School, and then there are other students in our district who have special needs that can't be serviced at Kirk, and they would be placed at other schools that would serve them best, and our special education department would go through on a student-by-student basis and make a determination of where is the best placement for those students, and those numbers fluctuate as, as students move into the district and move out or.
And it just occurred to me, if I remember correctly, when we were looking at the NSEO budget, it went up quite a bit. In fact, I remember we had a little bit of discussion around that, so.
And since the time that you've approved that budget, the numbers have already changed.
Well, and I want to thank you both very much for preparing this and delivering it to us in advance so that we can take an opportunity to review it, so thank you.
Your pleasure.
Any other questions then? If not, thank you very much. Thank you for a very concise presentation. Okay, and that takes us to the consent agenda items. Are there any items that a board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, if there is none, then the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to some special reports there. There's Freedom of Information Act requests. That's an information item, if anyone has any questions. The next is the parent open house. Dr. Small, if you'd like to comment on that?
In the next board letter, board members, if you'd like to attend parent open house, if you have a specific school, if you let us know, we will set up arrangements for you so that you can get a special parking spot, and if you'd like to go through a student's schedule, we can arrange that also.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that takes us to unfinished business, and the recommended action is that the board policy files GB-CBD/JFCMB, Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors be adopted as proposed and added as an active board policy on board decks. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. This is the second reading on it. Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the next policy, and this one is on employee conduct. The recommended action is that the board policy file GBAC, Employee Conduct, be adopted as proposed and added as an active board policy on board decks. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
And the next item is, the recommended action is that the board policy file JHCB, Anaphylaxis Prevention, Response, and Management Program be modified as proposed and added as an active board policy on board decks. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Point, uh, we renamed this policy, right, to be, okay.
Correct. It was called the Food Allergy Management Program.
But now it's called something else if this passes.
Now it's called the Anaphylaxis Prevention, Response, and Management Program. Okay, any questions? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to our 2022-2023 tentative budget, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 tentative budget as presented and direct the superintendent to place it on file for public inspection for a minimum of 30 days. Further, that notice of a public hearing to be held at the Board of Education meeting on September 22, 2022 be published. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have some comments. This budget proposes expenses higher than revenue. It cites a 3/4 million dollar increase in tax refunds. The recapture levy should be included to balance this budget. The budget proposes a $4,289,954 deficit in our capital outlay. Capital projects should be held off to balance the budget. Projects noted as the Conant locker room renovation, Rem Culinary Arts classroom renovation, and Palatine Conant Applied Tech Air Conditioning, are these projects that urgent that an unbalanced deficit budget should be approved? The budget states that the property tax collection in 2021 was 1.4% higher, and in year 2020, it was 3.4, 3.14% higher, yet the budget proposes a decrease of 1.8% in property taxes. In December 2020, the BOE levied 200 In December twenty-twenty, the B O E levied two-hundred-and-forty-one million, six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand for the twenty-twenty-one levy. The forty-five percent second payment of that levy is one-hundred-and-eight million, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, thirty cents. The fifty-five percent estimated first payment of the twenty-twenty-one levy is one-hundred-and-thirty-four million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is a total estimated property tax revenue of two-hundred-and-forty-three million, three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and thirty cents. This budget proposes that the local property tax collection will only be two-hundred-and-thirty-five million, sixteen thousand, six-hundred dollars. This is a capture rate of ninety-six-point-five-eight percent. Over the last twelve years, the capture rate has averaged a hundred-point-three-six percent, the lowest capture rate being ninety-nine-point-seven-two percent. Over the last twelve years, the district has averaged a one-point-seven-eight million-dollar annual surplus in property taxes, a four-point-two-five million annual surplus in revenue, and an average surplus of four-point-six-three million in expenses. With an annual average surplus of eight-point-nine million dollars compounding since twenty-ten, the district has drained the community of over seventy-eight million dollars, even when considering twenty-eight-point-six million dollars in abatements. This is not a household budget where more is better. This is a household expense where every dollar our school district asks our neighbors to provide. There should be a clear purpose and need, and it must be considered carefully.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
To summarize what Mr. Dombrowski said, I, I've been, been, been facetious here. I, over the years, I've learned that the levy is connected to the budget, even though they're, they're kinda reversed, you know? You, you do a levy after you do a budget, but it does roll in to the budget as, as, as far as revenue goes. And I think, and there's a lot of, a lot of differences since I've been on the board than, than in normal times, but the history has been that the reven, that the fund balances keep growing. So that means to me that we're not, and I think it goes back to the budget, so I, 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 I have some, some doubts. It's, it's a good plan, but I just think it's, I think we're gonna come up with another, another surplus, which we don't need.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if there are none, then may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The motion passes. All right, then that takes us to health and dental insurance premium rates. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the established Blue Cross Blue Shield Premium equivalent rates, contribution percentages, and wellness incentive structure for the applicable employee groups effective January one, twenty-twenty-three as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Okay. Aye.
That takes us to the operating fund balance. At our last meeting, it was asked to bring this up, so it is open for, for discussion. Dr. Small had provided us with some information. Would you like to highlight anything from that? Dr. Small?
The attachment, one attachment deals with the policy itself. The other attachment has a summary of the, how our reserves are categorized, and then also talks about one specific example that is occurring right now with the Cook County tax bills, when they will go out, when they will come in, which is one of the reasons for the use of a, a reserve.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
At a previous board meeting, I had asked to have this brought up for future discussion because we had previously, within the last year, discussed as a board, perhaps changing or adjusting the minimum threshold in our policy from the thirty-three percent. So, in support of discussed interest to consider that, I asked to have it on the agenda for future discussion, and that's why I asked to have it put here.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, then, right now, it's at the thirty-three percent, and that's our minimum. We did get some information on other school districts, so at this point, and the uncertainty of our property taxes and so on, it, it'll just remain as, as it is at this time, and we'll continue to monitor it as we have been and with our presentations.
And I appreciate Dr. Small providing us with that information from other school districts and where they're at as well in comparison. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, I, Mr. Rosenblum asked for this to be part of a topic for future discussion. Are we gonna vote on that, or?
No, this is the discussion now. He, he brought this up previously, and that's why we have this information.
Okay, now, now, now we're in D.
Now we're gonna move to D.
Okay.
Okay. So, all righty. So now we, we're, we've closed that. Potential topics for future discussion. I know Mr. Rosenblum has a thought.
I do. In looking at our revenues and how we consider them, and how we consider tax levies as a huge portion of that, and in fact, hearing from our presenters this evening regarding the, the portion of our revenues that are made up in the budget from revenue, from taxes, I know there are some school districts in our area and elsewhere that have additional revenue sources in the form of grants. And I would like to ask for a future item of discussion to be that this board consider the potential of adding a grant writer, an experienced and professional person to focus on that on behalf of our districts and our, our district and our schools, to add that to our staff, in the hopes that that person can bring a significant additional revenue stream to our district.
Before I ask for consensus on the board or what your thoughts are, I'm gonna ask Dr. Small to just very briefly tell us about what's our grant writing process currently.
So we have title grants and non-title grants. The, whether a grant, our title grants are all assigned to the administrator of that department. So, for example, we have a title grant that comes through for our career and technical education, that is Perkins and C T I grant money. That is considered a title grant that comes through and is in the office by the administrator of college and career readiness. We have Title I money that comes in, that is a title grant that is assigned to the administrator who is the Title I administrator. Non-title grants that come in, these would be grants that we may see, we may have companies reach out to us. For example, we have a grant from the Bosch Foundation, the Bosch, Bosch Foundation, then that non-title grant is assigned to the administrator for that area for which that money is allotted for. The grants that come in, that come from foundations, private industries, they are typically grants geared towards things that we don't do. So they are to inspire creativity within the education field, and they don't necessarily save you money, they give you access to money to do new things.
Thank you. All right, so the, the topic is, you know, should we ask Dr. Small and staff to look into getting a grant writer? Let me know if that's a discussion you would like to have.
So is, is that the item up to ask Dr. Small to do something, or for this board to discuss the topic? Because my understanding is this is a topic for discussion, because if we're going to pose it to her to do something, then I have some additional comments regarding what some other districts in our area do, and how they benefit from that.
Then let me clarify. Do we want to discuss this topic? And Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Madam President, this is an operational issue. I, I think that is completely out of the realm of a Board of Education's role as, as strategic. I, I would say no.
Ms. Cavill?
Uh, at this time, I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I did professional fundraising in, in previous life. I didn't do federal stuff, because that's a whole different ballgame. I actually had, you know, went out and wrote grant requests to foundations and that sort of stuff, and there is a process. I, I would like to have the discussion, but, but also to incorporate the possibility of, of hiring outside consulting, who probably would do it better than someone here, that, as part of the discussion.
Just, are you in favor of discussion?
Yeah, as long as that's included.
No, well, just the discussion, and then that's something that could be included. All right, Mr. Rosenblum?
I have a feeling I'm a yes, so yes.
Okay. Myself is a no. It's three yeses, three noes, so it, the motion, well, it doesn't go anywhere. All right, then that'll take us to our committee reports and for N S S E O. We had a presentation in regards to the Continuing Improvement Plan, and what I put at each of your sites was a little bit of information about the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Continuous Improvement Plan, and the focus, they're highlighting it as illuminating our purpose, talked about the mission, the vision, and the core values, and it also, they used an analogy of a flashlight, which was, you know, rather creative in the way it was presented, about the different portions of the flashlight and how that fits in the reflector, the transitional services that we offer, the lamp, you know, the vision and the values that are the source of the light going forward, the case of the flashlight, our supportive and collaborative culture and climate holds all the parts together and working together and shapes who we are. The contacts, the thin strips of metal throughout the flashlight that connect the various parts and help with that flow of energy, the batteries, a focus on student outcomes, you know, the power of all our work, and the tail cap, the social-emotional learning, which is the foundation for learning. So it was, it was interesting how this was presented, and again, that's the, the focus they have for the continuous improvement, the student outcomes, social-emotional, really looking to expand partnerships and work on the, the Parent Education Resource Center, the Kirk Center, the Perk Center, having the parents involved again. The Transition Program, which is very important to us at, at two-eleven, looking at a continuum of independent living activities and various opportunities, you know, for our students and for their families, and then transitioning as, as the students age out. So I thought this was, was interesting, and it kinda gives you a good snapshot of their Continuous Improvement Plan as we're going forward. Okay. All right, then that takes us to Ed Redd, please.
Thank you. This month, Ed Redd had concluded their summer, I wanna say summer concert series, but it wasn't. It was their summer, summer series of sessions on social-emotional learning. The session on August third was around equity and social-emotional learning, and they had some people from North Cook Intermediate Service Center and North Cook Young Adult Academy, which has a regional safe school program, speak to those who attended. And then, just earlier this week, actually yesterday, they, they had their last webinar. It was on social-emotional learning and community and community connection. It was very interesting. They had two presenters from District Twenty-One Wheeling speak about how their, they look at social-emotional learning and community, they look at community needs, uses, and demographics. And very interesting, they are building and gonna open a community services center. And this is going to not only be geared towards students, but their families and non-family residents in the community. They're talking about counseling, health, health provisions, meeting space, event space that could be utilized, and, and they look at it as what happens in the community impacts what happens in the schools, right? It impacts the students, it impacts the staff, it impacts what's going on as we see some things in the community filtering into our schools as well. Very interesting viewpoints on schools playing new roles in the community, very progressive kind of thinking that they're, that they're taking into consideration. They're collaborating with other organizations and legislators to help fund that program, so it's not all being put on the budget of the school district, but incorporating, collaborating with other organizations to provide that for their community. And it was very interesting, very, very interesting. So, so that was the last of the series. For those of us who are on the school board, we're all members of Ed Redd, so, so if you're interested in listening to any of those, actually, it was, it was listening and watching the, the series, please let me know, and I would be happy to share with you, there's like a pass code to log in to actually see them, and I would be happy to share those access codes with you.
Thank you. That takes us to Facilities and Building Safety Report.
We had a busy and successful summer with our facility improvement projects. We are, we were able to complete all of our restroom renovations now across the district with the final half completed at Palatine and Fremd High School this summer. Fremd High School's student cafeteria renovation has been completed, and students have been in and taking full advantage of it since they got back. We had a number of life safety projects that were completed, including roof replacements and mechanical equipment replacement, and probably our largest life safety project was phase one of our demountable walls at Palatine High School, which were replaced with more permanent structures. And then our Conant parking lot, where kinda rounds out the, the large projects that we had going. I would like to just recognize Mr. Sparks. He came in amidst the chaos this summer and has done a tremendous job in leading us to the finish line. So we have our next Facilities Committee meeting first week in September, at which point we'll start transitioning and talking about projects for next summer.
Thank you. All right, then that takes us to our calendar of events and upcoming events and calendar items. The next item would be a, in our agenda, we do have it listed, a review of closed-session items. However, we do only have one item for retirement that would come up before us. So on, if someone would like to enter, I would entertain a motion if someone wants to close, go into closed session. If not, then we can present the recommended action.
The point of order, I think because it's on the agenda, we do have to address it, and so it's kinda, kinda be awkward, where I think we're gonna all vote no, but I think we have to, we have to have that vote, so.
All right. Then the recommend-
So moved.
Okay, the recommended action is, let me read it then, that the board under closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment compensation, disciplined performance or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And if you wanna go into closed session, then you would say aye. If you choose not to, let me say no. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenblum?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
All right, then that will take us to our next item, which is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Samantha Dolan effective May twenty-twenty-seven, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, and if there's no other business to come before our board, then the Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.